Good evening to all, and welcome to the meeting of PCOSS City Council, which is now called to order. I'd like to call on Councilman McCary Freeman to lead us in the invocation, in pleasure of the legion.
Stand please. Bow with me. We come before you today with gratitude and reverence. We gather for this meeting, we seek your guidance and wisdom. Help us to make decisions that are reflective of your will and to work together in harmony. Grant us sincerity, understanding, and a spirit of cooperation. May our efforts here serve the greater good and honor your name. In your name we pray.
Amen.
... of the United States of America, and to live for which it stands, one nation, and one household, in the midst of the chaos and sorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we have a special presentation. I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Evans. He is the Director of Business Intelligence at Hampton Roads Alliance, and he's going to share some information with us about what the alliance does for the city of PCOSS as we work together in the region alongside of our fellow municipalities. Michael, the floor is yours, my friend.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all for having me. Good evening, Mayor Hucks, City Manager Wheeler, members of City Council. For those of you who haven't officially met yet, my name is Mike Evans. I serve as the Director of Business Intelligence for the Hampton Roads Alliance. I'm excited to be here this evening to share an overview of the Hampton Roads Alliance, some key points from a recent demographic report we released for the city of PCOSS, and an overview of some of the business intelligence services that you all have access to through your partnership with the alliance. So, to kick this off and kind of give a brief intro into who we are and what we do. So, the Hampton Roads Alliance is the regional economic development organization for Hampton Roads. So, our mission is to grow the region through business attraction and, of course, the retention and expansion of existing businesses in the region. We also want to empower our local partners with data and information that they need to make decisions that benefit their community. So, the alliance has a fairly large footprint. We have 15 local partners, so essentially from Virginia Beach west to Southampton County, all the way north to New Kent County, so covering a population of about 1.8 million individuals. We are also supported by over 100 local businesses, some of whom you can see here. And then, talking about some of the service offerings that we have, here you can see kind of a general overview of some of the services we offer. Of course, we have our core service offerings like business attraction, where we try to bring businesses into the region to grow the local economy. We also have business retention and expansion, really focusing on some of that workforce development piece, bringing in new talent into the region so that way our existing businesses can grow and expand. As I'm sure you all are aware, we also have events and networking that we do throughout the year. On that note, I hope to see you all at our annual meeting on the 27th. We also have marketing services. We do have an in-house graphic designer if there was ever any need for that kind of service. And then, of course, what we're here to talk about primarily today is our research services and our real estate solutions offerings. So, with that, I'll jump into kind of a sampling of some of the research services that we offer. So, for the city of PCOSS, we recently released, and for the rest of Hampton Roads, we recently released our 2024 locality profile report. And funny enough, data moves fast. That data has already been updated by the Census Bureau, so you all are actually going to get a bit of a preview of a report that's to be published in a couple months. So, first, starting with the population of the city. So, from 2022 to 2023, you can see you guys have a relatively stable population, but unlike many of our larger localities, you are growing. You are also seeing that you're getting a bit of a younger population, and you're seeing about stable veteran population as well. So, moving on to income and poverty. Incomes grew in the city of PCOSS in 2022 to 2023 about 5.6%, so outpacing the rate of inflation, which is good. That means incomes grew in real terms, and you can see it broken out between families, couples, and single individuals. You also have a lower-than-average poverty rate for the region. So, the average rate for the region is about 10.4%, so 5.8, about half of that. That's a very strong figure. So, income at all levels also are a bit higher than what you would typically see at the state and at the region. PCOSS is generally one of the wealthier communities in the region. Moving along to education, when you look at the rate of education, it is also a very educated population comparatively when you look at the region. Our regional average is 34.3%, so as you can see, outperforming the rest of the 15 localities and Hampton Roads. But what is pretty normal for most localities in Hampton Roads is that we do generally lag the state. The state education rate, which is defined as having a bachelor's degree or higher, sits at 41%. Moving on to employment, so employment figures have remained relatively stable. So, the employed population grew ever so slightly year over year, and there was a slight shift from the private sector to the public sector. So, while the employment remains stable, you're seeing a little bit of that shift in where people are seeking employment. Sometimes that can be typical of if people are seeking, or if they're feeling some sort of economic uncertainty, they might look for government positions because they traditionally give a little bit more stability. When you look at the labor force, you can see there's also very little change in the labor force, but one thing that is notable is about a 1.5% increase in the labor force participation rate. Your strongest industry, as with most localities, is education and social services. That's generally because of the public school systems. For the most part, those are the largest employers in every locality, and that makes about 25%, nearly a quarter of your workforce. Kind of wrapping it up for the demographic overview, looking at housing, home values remain relatively stable. There was actually a slight decrease in the median home value that could simply be due to increased supply of housing in the city. When you look at homeownership rates, you do have a relatively and comparatively high homeownership rate, and the percent of individuals who are defined as burdened by their home costs among homeowners is relatively low. So, generally speaking, we define housing burdened as somebody who spends more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So, as you can see, less than a third of homeowners are defined as housing burdened, but when you look at rental prices or rental burden, you can see that nearly two-thirds of the population is spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. For what it's worth, that is relatively normal. That's a pattern that we see throughout Hampton Roads, and it's just due to kind of higher rental costs. So, overall, this is kind of a brief overview of the local economy, but as you can see, the local economy, much like the regional economy, has remained relatively stable and relatively strong, so something you guys should definitely be proud of. So, moving on to some of the business intelligence services, so you kind of got a sample of some of the stuff that we generally do in the business intelligence division, but this will give you an idea of some of the additional things that you have access to through your partnership with the alliance. So, I break these out into essentially two buckets. We have our research services and our real estate solution services, so those are the two divisions that I oversee with the alliance. On our research services, through your investment with the alliance, you guys have access to about $50,000 worth of software services. So, our per capita funding rate for our local partners is a $1.15, so roughly $14,000 in annual investment gets you access to about $50,000 worth of software services, so a very good return if you leverage these. We leverage a whole bunch of business intelligence tools that provide workforce data, company data, geospatial data, economic impact analyses. So, I break them out into three specific service areas here. Data services is essentially a sampling of what you just saw, so workforce and demographic data. We can provide any sort of custom reporting that you would need in that bucket. We also do economic indicator reports, so if you ever wanted to know the specific economic conditions, unemployment rate, labor force, all of that on a regular basis, that is something we're able to provide. And company and contact data, so if there were ever any companies, any industries you wanted to get contact information for or know a little bit more information on, we can provide that kind of information to you. We also have our research services, so we do a lot of market feasibility analysis, so think of this as the type of service where what is the best fit at this location? Greatest example over the last 12 months has been, I'm sure you all saw in the news, the Rite Aid closures that were happening all throughout the country. We did a lot of work, working with our local partners, to see what would best fit those vacant spaces. It has ranged from urgent care facilities to Petco's, to Harbor Freight, but we can do that analysis on what the gap in the market is to see if you can find something that's the best fit. And we've done that for everything outside of Rite Aid, so if it's an industrial use or if it's a restaurant use, we can do that as well. We do wage and salary analyses. We are an extension of the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, so a lot of their research that you see coming out of their house, we help them in obtaining that information. We also, one of our kind of bread-and-butter services is economic and fiscal impact analyses. So, if you're ever pursuing a project and you want to know what the fiscal impact is, in other words, what the tax implications are, what the tax revenue would be, we can help you determine that, and we can do full economic modeling on what the flow-through is, direct, indirect, and induced impacts. And then, I have a catch-all in here of ad hoc research and support services. I always tell our local partners to think of me as kind of your in-house consultant. If there's ever a time where you are pursuing some research and you're thinking about engaging a consultant and you have a scope of work, send it over to me. More than likely, I'm leveraging the same tools that a consultant would, and we could save quite a bit of money. Last year, I think we saved some of our local partners, all combined, over $100,000 in consulting services just through their partner. We also send out regular reports on monthly, quarterly, and annual basis, so we send out DOD spending reports pretty regularly, and DOD funding reports. If there's ever a time where any of you would like to receive that, please let me know. I can add you to my distribution list. We also send out quarterly economic indicator reports, quarterly lease expiration reports, basically any sort of regular economic reporting. If there's anything custom that you want, we can do that for you. And we also have our annual report, like you saw with the locality profile report. And finally, we have economic development training services, so if anybody ever wanted to know kind of the basics of economic research and economic development research, we also provide that, and then we also manage the regional sales force model. So, if there is ever a time where you felt that you needed a CRM, we offer kind of a regional platform to do that. Then the second bucket is our real estate solutions. So, we also leverage CoStar and Salesforce for this. We can do all sorts of benchmarking and comparative analyses through our tools, and we can also do real estate market research and strategic planning for certain locations. So, whether it's a particular existing building, it's a site that you guys want to know what the highest and best use is, we can help you with that kind of research and determination. As far as reporting is concerned, this is touching on some of those quarterly reports that I've mentioned, so the 24-month lease expirations, we send those out every quarter to every locality. If there is a business that has a lease coming up for expiration, we make sure to notify you so that way you can engage with that business and make sure they stay here in the city. And then, we also send out a list of the largest transactions so that way you can see what's happening in the market. Support services, so the business intelligence division serves as the support staff for the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Mayor Hucks actually serves as our secretary for the EV RIFA board, and we're so happy to have him there, but we, in PCOSS, is a member of the EV RIFA, so happy to give you guys an overview of the EV RIFA another time if you wanted to, but essentially, it is just kind of regional co-investment into properties for site readiness and development so that way everybody can kind of benefit from development across the region. We also help with RFI response if there is ever a time where you need assistance with responding to a prospect that you need information on, whether it's workforce information, quality of life information, we assist with all of that. And then, site tour coordination, so if the state, a broker, a consultant ever wants to come in and see what PCOSS has to offer, we can help you coordinate that tour and make sure that they leave with the best impression possible. And then, we also help with Virginia Business Ready Sites Program support and site readiness support. If you are ever applying for grants or if you ever seeking funding from the state level, we can help you kind of facilitate that. So, I know that's kind of like drinking through a fire hose, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about kind of the locality profile and then, of course, the alliance and service offerings we have.
Any questions for Michael? Michael, thank you so much for being with us tonight after your work all day. Very much appreciate you coming out after hours and the time and effort you put into preparing this presentation. The statistics that you provide just gives us a better idea of where we are compared to our neighboring municipalities, and it just reminds us how fortunate we are to live in a city such as PCOSS.
Happy to do it. And if you guys have any questions afterwards, feel free to reach out.
Thank you again, Mike. Appreciate you being with us. Next item on the agenda, audience for visitors, so we will open the floor. Is there anybody here who would like to speak with us tonight? here who would like to speak with us tonight? Seeing none, we will close the floor and move on to item E, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the work session of January 27th, 2025?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the work session, January 27th, 2025.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Very well. Kristi, call for vote, please.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session from January 27th, 2025?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we approve the regular session, January 27th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Kristi?
Councilwoman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
This is the type of motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Kristi. Item F is new business. Item one, for new business, ordinance for fiscal year 2025 for the general fund, burn justice assistant grant funding for the police department. We have Chief Stephen Cates with us tonight.
Mayor, members of council. This first item that I'm here for tonight is the burn justice assistance grant. The JAG program makes federal funds available to localities to help support efforts to reduce crime and improve public safety. The DCJAS, Department of Criminal Justice Services, has been identified as a handling agency to sub-grant, basically, those federal funds to units of local government. January the 16th, we were notified that the City of Pecosin has been awarded $3,200 of funds that are carryover funds from federal fiscal years 19, 20, 21, and 22. Basically, it's left over money in the previous grants, and they said, "We're going to give you another piece of the pie," and told us it was, our part's $3,200, and the police department intends to use this money to add additional overtime hours for patrols in areas that are identified and targeted for, that we need to do more work in. We all know that all the hoo-ha that's been going on about grants and federal spending and all of that, and we, the department will make sure we have those funds available in hand before we go spend it. We're not sure if we're actually 100% getting it or not. For your consideration tonight as an ordinance, receiving and appropriating $3,200 in JAG funding.
Thank you very much, Chief Cates. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Yes, I move that the council approve an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the burn justice assistance grant and making appropriations for the fiscal year 25 from the general fund.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Kristi?
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you. Item two under new business, we have an ordinance for fiscal year 2025 for the general fund, the urban SDK speed and traffic calming solution funding for the police department. Again, we have our police chief, Stephen Cates, with us. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
At work session on January the 13th, council indicated to city staff to begin work on various solutions to address traffic and pedestrian safety in the community. And my department, the police department, along with city engineer and the city manager's office, has identified a technology solution that can assist in identifying and prioritizing various projects to address concerns and future projects on streets throughout the city. This solution is urban SDK. As previously discussed in the work session, urban SDK utilizes anonymous data collected by satellites from motor vehicles and cellular devices that help to identify speed, traffic volume, traffic density on every street in the city. The solution is beneficial to the police department in identifying problem areas, allocating resources, and more. The engineer can utilize the solution for planning purposes concerning current and future planned improvements in our infrastructure, and the public works department can also utilize the solution to assist in prioritizing paving projects and other traffic improvement plans. Urban SDK offers smaller jurisdictions, a price plan at a reduced price based on our population size, and if we do a prepaid multi-year contract, there's an additional discount that's available. This product, if we, if you choose to fund this project, a three-year contract would cost the city $44,550, $550, and it's a three-year contract, and that would front-load the program with 13 months of historical data on day one. And if you all approve this, approve for us to move forward with this tonight, it'll be up and running in as little as about 10 days or so. They said it was a matter of a few business days to get all of the specific data programmed in, like what's the speed limits on the individual streets and that sort of thing, has to be programmed specifically for our community. They'll come in and do a training, and we'll be up and running. So, it's a pretty quick turnaround on that. And as the manager discussed, I reached out to urban SDK, and they have confirmed for me that their current clients in the Commonwealth of Virginia include the cities of Chesapeake, Richmond, Lynchburg, and Roanoke, and the counties of Prince William and Falkir. And so, there's several clients already onboard in Virginia using this data, and from what I understand in that conversation, they have others that they're talking with other than just Pecosin. And so, I pulled up, they sent me sample data, I have that pulled up, and it's basically, it's a web-based solution, and we can, it pulls up the city, and it didn't realize the city goes to the middle of the Chesapeake Bay, apparently, according to their diagram there. But, it allows you to, the program allows you to zoom in on any particular part of the city. What I have prepared right now is just the average speed. So, we'll click on this little spot right here, that's Pecosin Avenue between Odd Road and Municipal, and this is sample data from back in November of 2024. The average speed for the month of November in that segment of Pecosin Avenue was 33 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile speed was 37. So, 85% of the traffic was at or below 37 miles an hour on that particular segment of Pecosin Avenue. And that allows us to look across the city at any particular street at any given time. It's regularly updated data, and so as the calendar changes, we can update the data, because different streets, different times of year, different weather conditions, the speed fluctuates. And you'll notice the graphic in the lower right corner, that is the day of week and time of day breakdown. If I can make it scroll, there we go. The lighter the color is a time period where the average speed was higher. So, for example, Saturday in the early morning hours is one of the higher-speed times for this particular stretch. So, that would be, when I look at this, that tells me that that would be one of the times that I want to put an officer in that area to do speed enforcement, because the average speed is higher, which means that there's a number of cars going over that that raises the average. The darker the color, that overnight hours on Wednesday, the average speed was 28 mile an hour, so it's pretty good. So, I don't think we necessarily need to be working in that area at that time. So, it helps with allocation of my resources and where to put my folks to be most effective, and like I say, it accesses that data across the city. Just, and real quick, on the traffic density, when we pull that information up, if the public works is trying to decide which street to get its priority, they can look on any particular segment of any street in the city and see that the annual average daily traffic for Cedar Road, 700 vehicles for that particular segment that I clicked on. And so, they can look at that, and they can use that to help prioritize. And if they're debating on two different streets, one has the average traffic of 700 and one's got 1,500, then we might shift that priority to the higher-volume street first, and then get to the next one in the next round of pavement. So, any questions?
It's an on, like an ongoing data. In other words, it's like the last seven days or the last 30 days, or, I mean, I assume it's constantly moving.
It's 30-day blocks. It will refresh the first day of every month with the previous 30 days' data.
As for general public chief, I can see where this information is, would be very valuable to you, public works, engineering, et cetera. Assure the public that you cannot tell that Kerry Freeman went speeding down some street with Councilman Southall in his pickup truck on Tuesday at 2:47.
Not in my truck.
As I stated when I started the presentation, this is anonymous data. There is no way to go into this program and find out which piece of data that contributes to these averages and totals belongs to any specific person or any specific vehicle. This is aggregate data, and it's anonymized to where we have no access to the specifics. It's the end results is what we have access to.
Chief?
Yes?
Can you get this monthly report, does it give you a report such that these are the roads that had the highest difference from the screen?
There, I'm not exactly.
Give you an idea of what roads they're going to look at, so you don't have to sit all day long and pick each individual street?
I'm not sure exactly if that specific report is available. There is monthly reporting that it will do if we ask it to, and that specific report, I would have to ask the vendor when they do the training on it, and they would show me how to do it. It could be as simple as I tell the system on the first day of the month, each month, send me a list of the top 10 in my email, because it's a pretty robust platform.
Or else you could tie yourself up all day long.
Part of that, too, part of what helps that, and if I can, I'm not real good with these little touchpads, I should have brought a mouse, because it's not wanting to work. If I go to the, back to the average speed, you can see, it's a little bit harder, but you can see there's different shades in the color, and the brighter that red is, the faster the average speed. And so, if I'm taking a quick look to know where I need to send somebody today to do extra traffic enforcement, I'm going to look at the map, and I'm going to find the brightest color, and that's the area I'm going to focus on for that particular moment in time. And then I can drill down a little bit deeper as the month goes on to, because that'll help me prioritize things. Brighter colors get more attention first. Yes, ma'am.
And just to clarify, this is historic data. You're not looking at live data?
Correct. It's, on the first day of the month, the system loads the previous month's data.
So, it's not rolling either, not a rolling historic, it's blocks. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I'm sorry, one more question, and it actually came, Keith was the brilliant one. It, does it do directional data? Like, can you tell how much, how fast the traffic is eastbound versus westbound?
No.
Okay.
All right. With that being said, for your consideration now as an ordinance appropriating the funding to move forward with this project.
Thank you very much, Chief Cates. Appreciate you being with us. The demonstration was very helpful. So, appreciate your time and effort, as well as the research that it took to come up with the technology. So, that being said.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the ordinance for the fiscal year 2025 for the general fund to acquire that urban SDK speed and traffic calming solution.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kristi?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Kristi. Item three under new business, ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2025 for capital projects fund. With us tonight is our finance director, Ms. Tara Woodruff.
The Public Works Department has a 1990 Caterpillar loader, which has been experiencing mechanical issues with transmission, and they had to rent a loader at the cost of $9,000 per month to assist with their operations. They did get a quote to inspect the transmission, but due to the age of the loader, Public Works recommended that we replace the equipment with a new John Deere loader at a cost of $163,000. There is a cooperative purchasing agreement established with Sourcewell where we can purchase the loader from Coastal Equipment, which does get us a better price. With the issuance of the 2022 bonds that we issued for the public safety building, we have earned bond interest, which has not been appropriated yet in the capital projects fund. Therefore, there is the $163,000 that would be available to purchase this loader. For your consideration, as an ordinance making additional appropriations in the capital projects fund, an authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract with Coastal Equipment for the purchase of this loader. And I would be happy to answer any questions. Bodina Wright from Public Works is also here.
This particular vehicle's been on the CCIP for about 120 years or something like that, and I was going back through all of them, going, my gosh, how long is it going to be able to last? And it's about 1990. It ought to have antique plates on it. If we could get it to run, we could probably put it in the parade, but other than that, I think we need a new one.
Tara, could you share with us, please, what the cost would have been without the discount? Or, Bodina can help us.
Was it $234,000?
$234,328.
Wow.
$234 versus $163 because of the discount, and we get that discount because we network with other municipalities.
It's a cooperative purchasing agreement. So, the Sourcewell has done some of the work in advance? To get the best price, and we get to benefit from that.
Very good. And that just further emphasizes what we talk about so much, is the importance of relationships, similar to what Mr. Michael Evans shared with us tonight about our involvement with the Hampton Roads Alliance, and so many other regional entities that we're involved with, and I can speak more about that in a little while, but thank you for sharing this with us as well. So, thank you, Tara. Also like to thank Ms. Bodina Wright, who is our Public Works Operations Manager. Also like to thank our Public Works Director, Mr. John Anderson, and of course, our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Tanya O'Connell. So, really appreciate all that y'all do just to save the citizens' money of this magnitude. That being said, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2025 to the capital projects fund.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Kristi?
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you. Item four under new business, a resolution making an appointment to the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the planning commission with the name of Michael Armentraut, this is for the Western Precinct, with the term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kristi?
Councilman Thye?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you to Mr. Michael Armentraut for his willingness to serve with us on the planning commission. And I'd also like to thank serve with us on the planning commission. And I'd also like to thank outgoing planning commission number, Ms. Christine Salick, for her service to the community. Item G, comments of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two items this evening. And we tried a, a change in the way we present these by actually putting them on the agenda with a little bit of a write-up. We'll see how that goes. I still reserve the right to bring something at the last minute. But this evening, there are two items. The first is a follow-on from your strategic planning retreat of the first week in January. You asked, as a council, that staff attempt to, to take all of the good input and discussion and turn that into a, a vision and mission document. We added, because it flowed well based on the conversation that you all had, strategic initiatives and additional areas of focus. I prepared that draft in discussion with Mr. Morgan, who was our facilitator. Shared it with you, Mr. Mayor, who in turn shared it with council. And both yourself and Councilwoman Hubbard provided some additional revisions to it. And it is before you tonight for your consideration. If you feel that it is, is actionable, I appreciate a, a simple motion to adopt it. If there are further revisions required, we're prepared to accept those now or...
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments?
In, in this year 2025, we're having a lot of firsts. From what I can understand, based on advice from people more knowledgeable and experienced than I am, strategic retreat that we had on January 4th was the first ever, although I have been involved in, in two budget-specific retreats. This year was the first for the strategic planning retreat. And a lot of good things have come from that, as the manager referred to. The statement that we have is a direct result of the time invested that day. And the draft that Randy developed enabled us to get where we are very efficiently and in very short order. I know the, the editorial was made. I think I contributed one word. And Jeannie, being the professional she is, she had a, a few more contributions as well. But if it was not for, for Randy's draft version, it would have taken significantly longer to arrive at where we are now. So thank you, Jeannie, for your contributions. And thank you to the rest of council members for, for weighing in as well and providing the basis that that draft was based on. So that being said, can we get a simple motion as a manager requested of the, the vision and mission statement?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Kristi?
Councilwoman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Thank you very much. And Randy, if I understood correctly, that will be posted upon the city's website.
All over the place.
All over the place. Very, very good.
If you want to get a tattoo of it, I'll pay for it.
That, that is dedication, Councilman Fai.
I think that'd be great.
Of course, item two under the comments of the manager is a permanent speed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also a follow-on from your January 13th discussion. Police Chief summarized the vast majority of that discussion. So coming out of that, we were going to do a number of things. We were going to step up and begin, and we have begun, the driveway speeding enforcement program, looking at additional tool. You asked us to come back with additional information, and a demo of urban SDK. We discussed at that time also the suggestion to install another pair of the traffic monitoring signs, the speed monitoring signs, similar to what we have at Trinity Church. Unlike the other items on your agenda, we don't need an appropriation from you. We've, we have sufficient money in our budget to go ahead and, and purchase another pair of those signs. And so without objection, we'll go ahead and do that. And we would look for guidance now or in the future from council as to where you'd like to have those installed.
Questions or comments?
One question, Randy. Those permanent signs we just talked about, would they be moved around according to the data that Police Chief gets off of these reports?
We're not intending to move them around. They can be moved. So I don't want to suggest that they have to stay in one place for years. But they're not the kind of signs we're going to be able to move weekly like we do the portable ones. So we ought to, we're going to limit the number of moves, but that doesn't mean we couldn't move them.
Based on the current data that we have, and I think we've discussed this previously, citing on the roads where we would like to put them?
I think we talked about the possibility of Rens Road, Ridge Road, Forest Road, just to name three. In the, my recollection from your January work session, prioritizing roads for the 80th, 80th percentile speed study?
Yes.
As soon as our tech, current technology came back up, one of them, one of the two. That will be deployed on Ridge Road this week and, and make its way to the other three. And I believe, off the top of my head, it's, it's pasture and Rens is the first three. We'll continue to bring you that information when we have it. I expect to have the, at least the first one, if not the first for you at your next meeting. Once urban SDK is up, we can begin to bring it at a much faster pace than that. But the suggestion, and I'm not intending to speak for anyone in particular, but the suggestion that you received previously was, so that is certainly an option. High-volume road, certainly. But at any time, council would like to provide direction.
Very good. And how does the council feel about that? Is that something we can decide tonight? Or do we want to take a couple of weeks and revisit that at the next meeting? Keeping in mind that with the decision to purchase the urban SDK and the possibility of that being up and running, you know, within 10 days or so, that would be a tool that we'll have to, to do some research.
That would allow us to make a much better intelligent decision, I think.
And I would like input from the police department.
So without objection, we'll go ahead and move forward to acquire the signs?
Yes, sir. We'll figure out what the rest of that means over the course of the next few weeks.
Very good. Is that something everybody can agree to?
Sir?
Aye.
Do we need a motion on that?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next item is council directives. I'd like to start tonight with Councilman Fai, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Well, the big thing I have is on Thursday at Emus Baptist Church, starting about 8:30, we'll begin the monthly mobile food pantry for those deserving and needing our assistance with food support. Emus Baptist Church and the members there have been doing a great job since our move there in November, and shout out to them. But also, we're having support this month from city employees, which will be out there. I have a list of 12 I know of, at least right now. And it takes about 10 people in order to be able to make it come off well. We're getting our operation down smoothly at MS, that's the move from municipal building, and encourage anybody that would like to help out to be there about 8:30. The advertised opening of the pantry is at 10 o'clock, although we do open usually about 9:30 because we have our stuff together by that time. But it all depends on the delivery of the truck, which should come about 8:30. It takes us about an hour before we can open up our location. And again, shout out to the Emus Baptist Church people that do a great job in making sure the traffic is taken care of and the people are greeted appropriately and, and we provide them with the necessary food that they need this month.
Thank you, Keith. Councilwoman Hubbard?
Oh, it's Valentine's Week. And Friday is your last opportunity to register kids who are in kindergarten up to age 15. For Gretchen at Parks and Rec has that open for youth spring soccer. So this Friday will be the last opportunity to register for that. She also has registration open for youth league volleyball, ages nine to 13. That season begins April 15th and runs through May 31-ish. And they also need volunteer coaches. So if any of you all like volleyball and know what you're doing with that thing, please volunteer. Gretchen could use your help. And there's also volleyball clinic for kids who want to learn. And that's three Saturdays in March. Get with Gretchen to find out more about those dates. But that's for kids ages, they have two different groups, 8, 10, and 11 to 14.
Thank you, Jeannie. Councilman Southall?
I'd just like to thank the people who took that time out, time out of their busy schedules to come out here and pay attention to the city government in person. I think that's admirable. I'd like to see more people out here doing the same thing. At the same time, I'd like to thank the people at home who take the time to turn on the TVs and listen to it on TV. It's important for the citizens to pay attention to their government, more at these ages. Be thankful you live in a city like Pacosa where things are done fairly well. I can't think of a city in Pacosa I'd rather be in. I'd like to thank the city staff for all their fine work and Mr. Michael Evans for his presentation tonight. And please be aware that we continue to have vacancies on various boards and commissions. We've gotten a few applications here in the recent past. I'd like to see more. We have several boards and commissions. I think the, the application say on file for two years. Is that right, Kristi? Say again?
Four years.
Three, three years?
Four.
Four years, okay. And just because you don't get selected for one at the first go-around, don't forget there's always a second chance. We do rotate those people around. So thank you again. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Councilwoman Emmett?
I have just a few things. The Virginia, Virginia Municipal League has an annual essay contest, and it is if I were mayor essay contest. It is open to seventh and eighth graders in member municipalities, which we are one. Regional winners will receive a $150 gift card and a plaque, and a state winner will receive a $250 gift card and a plaque. Plus, the winning essays will be featured in the May-June issue of VML's Virginia Town and City Magazine. And basically, it's if you were a community leader like a mayor, what's a problem in your community that you would like to solve, and you come up with a solution for it. March 17th is the deadline. I would love to see Pacosa represented. And it's a really good way to encourage students to become a little bit more involved in municipal government, become educated about the process. So if you would like to, if you're interested in that, you can go to vml.org opportunities, and you'll see all the guidelines there. The second thing is the Kiwanis Club of Pacosa and Boating and Fishing Flea Market is Saturday, March 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the high school. Admission is $5. If you are shopping, I encourage you to come early. You can also rent a table to sell all of the fishing gear that you have in your garage or elsewhere. Or if you want to donate it, we would gladly come pick that up too, if you have any fishing gear. And then lastly, as you may have noticed, and as the city communicated, the city's recycling dumpster out behind City Hall was removed due to misuse. If you recently moved or something like that and have a large amount of boxes that you need to get rid of, a pretty large amount, then you can call up the Public Works Department and they can arrange on Thursdays for a truck to come over and pick up your large quantity of boxes. So that is still a service that the city will provide in lieu of having that, that recycling bin. That's my.
Thank you, Angie. Councilman Freeman?
Nothing new.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Vice Mayor Bunting?
Thank you. I would just like to thank those in the audience tonight. Thanks for coming to a council meeting, for those watching on TV as well. And I would also like to thank Mr. Michael Evans for coming out as well, the Director of Intelligence for Hampton Roads Alliance. And I would like to welcome Mr. Armentraut. Thank you for your initiative to apply for the planning commission. And we congratulate your appointment and thank you once again for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Debbie. I'd also like to thank Jason, who is helping us tonight with audio visual. Without those folks, we would not be able to put these meetings on. Would also like to thank my fellow council members for sharing the responsibilities for the motions and the seconds. It's good to see everybody pitching in. And it just underscores what we're trying to do this year with unity, focusing on relationships. There's not a finer group of people that, that I've ever worked with. So thank you all for that. And I can assure the, the community, this group of council members, we work together. We communicate regularly, extensively, of course, on an individual basis, as we serve the greater good. But so much effort goes into the decisions we make. And although it may seem that it's easy when we're sitting here at the dais, it's quite a bit of work, quite a bit of effort, research, collaboration with each other and staff before we can make these decisions tonight. And of course, we factor in the input we get from citizens throughout the community, whether it's in-person communication, emails, text messages, phone calls. But we, we do listen and we do factor all that into the decisions that we make. And as I mentioned earlier, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the, the regional presence that we have as a city. Even though we're a small city, as our manager likes to describe us, we do punch above our weight class. And we're able to provide leadership across the region. Just some examples of those regional entities are the Hampton Roads Plan and District Commission, Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facility Alliance, Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission. And as we talked about earlier when Mr. Evans was here, the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. And part of our jobs as council members is to serve as ambassadors for the city, as we represent the citizens at, at the regional level. That being said, motion for adjournment.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Kristi, call for vote, please.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Thank you, Kristi. We are adjourned.